Pastor Mary Eldridge here.
Councilman Gilbert here by present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so, stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor George Hodam, verse 9 in Evangelical Church, according to the Catholic Regent.
Pastor Frank, Father, thank you for this day that you've given us. Thank you for life, health, thank you for the ability to serve. Lord, I ask for special blessings upon these servants tonight. Have their decisions reflect your desires. Have us all be about your business in all that we do. We love you, we honor you, and give you praise for everything, in Jesus' name.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Item 3, consider approval of agendas presented. Are there any changes?
Just like, not really changes on the announcement of the work session on Monday, but we have added on the nine, two items about our March 20th meeting and seconds about permits for transportation, streets, and ride work. So we have added those two to the agenda.
Thank you. There have been motion on the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Please take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting on February 6, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Vote on that.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you for the consent agenda. 6A, consider awarding bids for semi-annual paving, asphalt mix, milling, and mineral aggregate. 6B, consider awarding bid for gas line installation. And 6C, consider declaring a surplus vehicles and equipment. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, drive a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Moving on that.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving into new business. 7A, consider authorizing special appropriations to the Public Building Authority for lighting improvements at the Leslie Town Center. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, the Public Building Authority, which through a lease approved in 2004 operates and manages the Leslie Town Center for the city of Baltimore, has submitted a request for funding assistance to replace the lighting system in the Estes Williams Runway. Bids were solicited by the PBA in January, and D and D Enterprises Incorporated was selected as the lowest bid meeting specifications in the amount of $69,355. This bid amount does not include replacement of ceiling tiles or possible rewiring. The PBA is requesting that the city pay at least half the cost, or at least $34,677.50, of the cost for replacing the lighting in this main conference room. The lease agreement provides that the PBA will keep the improvements on the property in a good state of repair and reservation as long as such repairs are necessitated by normal wear and tear. This is a key part here, and I've highlighted this on the screen there. Major repairs such as the roof, exterior wall, foundation, HVAC system, and parking are the joint responsibility of the PBA and the city. So in most of these instances in the past, the city splits this with the cost with the PBA. Although that's not always been the case. So in reviewing this, I'm not certain that a lighting replacement should be considered as a major repair. It's not specifically listed as one in the agreement. I went through those just then, on the roof, the walls, and so forth. Another concern is that I have is that we were not made aware of this requirement prior to approving this year's fiscal year's budget. We haven't been able to better plan for this. However, with all that said, you know, this is a very important facility for the city and the county. And I do believe some level of financial assistance would be appropriate. And I would recommend a minimum contribution of $15,000 to assist with the lighting system replacement. I see that Catherine's here. She told us she wasn't coming, but she's here tonight. Got any questions for her? My recommendation is to at least provide $15,000 in assistance for funding of the replacement of the lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion on that? 7A item.
Second.
Got a motion, and a motion from Councilman Walker, seconded by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public?
Yeah, can I drive this?
Yes, definitely, yes. Yeah, we had to do the motions and everything.
Oh, it's perfect. I want to.
What's the word for it? Is it motion? What is the motion?
I was gonna do for the.
Find as recommended by the city.
And then we're gonna, yeah, then have some discussion.
So, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the Public Building Authority, we're not asking for a lighting improvement. We're asking for a lighting repair. So our current system, we're not trying to improve the current system. We're trying to repair the current system because the current system does not function properly. So as with that being said, we do have 20 can lights that are in the facility right now in the walls that we do not have any light from. And we're just continuing to lose those because the ballast that we currently have have been discontinued, and the company did not make a retrofit for them. So our current system, we've worked with Lutron, who is the one that put in the current system, as well as multiple electric companies to be told that our system cannot be repaired. So we don't have any option but to replace it. And with that being said, we are asking you guys to pay the 50% share of major repairs according to the lease agreement. So it is that $34,677. And we have done lease improvements to the facility without asking for that 50% share since I started there in 2021. So we have done things that we didn't ask for the share. So we are asking for that now to help with this. And we did not budget for this as well. This is something that we've been working on, starting in June of last year. And we worked with, like I said, multiple companies, even like border states, to try to find anywhere to get these ballots to continue to put Band-Aids on it. So unfortunately, our hands are tied as well. And we're just trying to get the system to continue to have lights in the building because we need them now.
That was ingenious.
Yes, but if you guys have any questions for me on anything? For bringing a light?
I know, we got a motion to the second so we can start to have some discussion. You said that y'all have, since you've been there, y'all, it's in the agreement to put away 2,500 per year for things like this. But since you've been there, y'all have been doing 5,000, correct?
Correct. So since 2021, so we currently have $44,000 in maintenance reserve. And since I've been there in 2021, we have put $20,000 in maintenance reserve. So we've done more than the obligated amount.
Until you have 44 right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Does the Public Building Authority have the funds for this project on there?
If we reallocated a lot of money, we could come up with it, yes. But it would hurt us, I think. We do have a lot of projects in the future that still need to get done that we have not budgeted for. And so in order to keep maintaining those things, that's why we're asking for that. We did do several repairs, like I said, since I started there in 2021, that we did not ask for the half. So like we've done a parking lot repairs. We did have, replaced one HVAC unit that we didn't ask for the 50% share in. So I can't speak to anything prior to 2021, just because I wasn't there. But we have, we didn't ask for a lot of it some of the time as well, so.
Since you have the funds already, James, since we didn't budget for this, you know, that's a pretty big chunk. Could we not do the 15 and then budget the remainder of that 50% in the next budget?
Yeah, I mean, you could include whatever you'd like to in terms of the contribution to the tender for next year's budget. You know, that's, as I said earlier, that was part of my concern is, I think you told me about this in December. And we didn't, that's of course, that's, I mean, you know, I mean, $35,000 is a lot of, a lot of money, but you know, Elder, we say this, 20,000 here, 20,000 there, 40,000 is real money. So we need to be careful, be good stewards. One other thing, and I guess when I asked Catherine this, that we've already, we have plans, and Mayor Beth worked on this about doing some major improvements to the parking lot, the storm sewer. And what we agreed, what I agreed after discussion with the council, that we estimated about 40,000. And we, the city's committed 30,000 to that. We also have the 10,000.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. We have to look at everything. I mean, we only have $44,000 in maintenance reserve. So we would be pulling from other things to try to get.
Can you move with that project in particular?
The parking lot?
Yeah.
Mayor Beth, you got the?
We're ready to bid at any time, but it's like we didn't have it budgeted. So I'm trying to hold it until the next budget year.
We've done temporary repairs. It should last for a while with that. What this, what that project is, is from the backside of the parking lot, there's a storm pipe that runs underneath the railroad track. It's an old corrugated metal pipe, and the entire bottom of it's gone. And that's why the parking lot has collapsed. And we prepared it, I believe, Catherine.
We have had two sinkholes in the parking lot.
Yeah, so it's, well, don't call them sinkholes. We have some problems, you see.
Yes, two small issues that we've had.
And it's very clear, the parking lot is in the lease agreement. That's a 50/50 match specifically stated in the lease agreement. And again, I, I think it's appropriate help. It's just, again, we've not budgeted, and I don't know if you can work that, you know, until we waited until, you know, July 1 is where it would be next fiscal year. We're just now starting the budget process if you're talking about including money in next year.
Are we expecting, I may have missed this. Were we expecting a 50% match on the repairs in the parking lot?
Now, we, and I discussed this with y'all many months ago. We agreed to do more of a 75/25 on that because we knew that that was a big hit for them. And we agreed to do 30,000. And also because part of this drainage goes underneath the railroad. It's not really technically part of their property. So we thought it would be fair to, let's take the bulk of that, 30,000 and 10,000 to the PBA.
That's a, whatever is what.
Thirty to ten.
And we, we enjoy the partnership, and we, and I, we appreciate hearing that you paid for some of the stuff too. But I, I think as recent as what, a year or two ago, we had a significant roof expense. And I think we paid all that. And so just the hits keep coming. And the joy of ownership, I can.
Yeah, I mean, we've had.
I can sympathize with.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, a lot of our repairs, obviously, are not budgeted for. You know, we have, we've had roof leaks since that, that damage thing. So, you know, obviously, we're doing the best that we can to ask for as little amount as possible.
Well, if they have 44 and they need 65, what if we just made up the delta?
And that's what I was saying.
Well, I'm just, not, not 50. I'm just saying.
Oh, just they just budget for next year?
And then the ceiling tiles, the extra wiring, whatever else, that's, that's yours.
Well, good. If we do, if we do that, I'm not arguing with them. Just enough that then they won't have the 10,000 they're gonna need to help us cover the parking lot. And at some point, that's gotta be done. We could probably put that off until.
Yeah, when do you escrow? When do you make your deposits?
How much have, how much have you spent? You said you did some with power help. How much is that total?
So since I started there, we've done 150, a little over 150,000 for the leasehold improvements. And the city has paid a little over 35,000.
That's a substantial number, and I think that's great that you guys have put so much forward. I think my biggest concern is just like the timing of the budget and how you set precedent for any other groups or anybody that needs assistance from the city in this manner. And so, you know, I think it would be important for us to keep up the Leslie Town Center. We are, we're young with the county being the other partial owner in that. And it is a great facility for our community. And so I support everything you guys are doing over there. I think you offer an amazing facility. It's been well-used by the community. So I can appreciate all that. I'd, I'd be in favor for approving what James recommended. But I'm also inclined to think that when it comes to budget time and if we can hold some money aside in the budget to reimburse some of these funds, that that's okay as well. It's just important to do that through the budget process and plan the repairs out.
Well, we can do that. I definitely think it's only fair to point out too that what a great job Catherine has done there. I don't know if y'all remember, but they were impacted greatly by COVID. They couldn't rent the facility. And, you know, when you go through two years of something like that, that's part of the reason why we went ahead and paid the whole part of the roof, which was $112,000 to, to help them. Because we do recognize, I recognize the great job Catherine does for the facility, but also the importance of the facility to the city and to the county. But again, we, we want to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I know each of y'all, but I would think that would be something that could be worked out. You guys can float the amount until July 1, if you could put some money in there. We could add some additional funds for this.
Is that an option, do you think?
Yes, ma'am.
When do y'all plan on starting work on this?
June 16.
Okay, so that.
We have a 10-day period closed off where we're not accepting any events nor have the work done, just because we already have. We're trying to wait as long as we could, but the lights just keep going out. And I have clients that are like, hey, can you put a light bulb in that light? And I, I can't.
That's your, that's why I'm.
Nope, yeah.
Time is going to work out. Just one other discussion point. I don't care if you solve it here now, but there's no way five grand a year is gonna be able to keep up with, with the agreement that we have.
Yeah, we only are obligated to the 2,500, but we do more.
We are only obligated to split these costs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We do as much as we can.
Talking about contingencies of obligations, so I'm ringing it up.
Yeah, I think that's what we could probably discuss in the fourth budget season.
Yes.
Sit down, look at everything and say, hey, you know, what is a good relationship here? How, how do we?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, my first full fiscal year with the town center, we put 10,000 away. So we've been trying to put, and I, that was kind of a big thing when I started too, like, hey, we need to put as much, but we drained everything for COVID. I mean, we were.
All I'm saying, maybe time, maybe time, as you're revisiting.
Yeah.
It may be time to revisit how much you can escrow because just the idea that five grand a year is gonna keep pace with.
Correct.
These type of repairs.
A 23-year-old facility.
Facility, yeah, okay.
You know, one other thing to note is that the council appoints the members of the PBA. You can have that conversation with the members as they're appointed that, well.
We need to see some, some type of.
We need to see about some.
Maybe toward a better way to bring up the thing.
But, you know, they, you know, they run a tight ship. And they're only limited to the amount they can, you know, whatever they can generate from a facility. And you can't, don't have lighting. So I understand the logic here. If I came with it, how am I gonna make it in?
Turn the lights on. Get them ready there.
Right, and it is a very old building. I mean, it's been here a long time.
Correct. And that's why we've done the projects that we've done. Yeah, and that's why we've done the projects we've done since I started was because we were trying to get everything up to date. It's just this is kind of the last thing, and we were trying to hold off as long as possible. When we looked at this before I started, they were given a quote of like $200,000 to redo it. So they were like, hey, no, we're just gonna Band-Aid. And we bought as many ball systems as we possibly could to the beginning of 2024. And I didn't, was not told by that company that they weren't gonna make a retrofit for it. So they just continued it and then didn't make a retrofit and didn't inform us. So we weren't able to, we're kind of put in a bad situation by them.
What do you want to say?
She said June.
Yeah, we have it scheduled for June 16th for nine days, a nine-day period.
And the motion that we, the amended motion we've got is to do the 15 now. And then when budget session comes up for us in June, budget for the remainder, correct? Is that what you're?
Yeah, the additional 40,000.
Yes.
Is it worth it to, is it worth it to revisit for the context of the budget?
I think at a minimum, we, we discussed the additional amount that you requested now. But it would be nice for us to know if there's any other new improvements in the pipeline, where we really need to be, and what we need to budget for going forward.
And since how they're going, they didn't structure it. They're untricky.
I know there's one plan that we'll talk about as we get into budget times. So we got a motion to do the 15,000. We need to amend the motion to also request that staff look at, including in next year's budget, the additional 20,000. We can round it up.
Let me make our.
Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
That y'all wanna do something to?
So I need, I need someone to make that motion.
I'll make that motion to.
To amend?
To amend, to amend the current motion. Do the 20,000. You just have to budget here.
Okay, so 15,000 now, amending it also to add 20,000 in the budget session on top of more discussion that we're gonna have to figure out how, if there's other budget things that they need.
Additional items.
Yeah.
Say whatever motion you want.
So I've got a motion from Councilman Baji. I've got a second from Councilman Walker for the amended motion. Yeah, motion as amended. Any more discussion from council? Darren, good?
Yeah, so you will be voting on.
The motion as amended.
Yes.
All right, so a motion, a second, we're gonna be voting on a motion as amended for 15,000 and then adding the 20,000 and having more discussion next session. Correct? Okay, any more session? Okay, go ahead and vote on the motion as amended.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. You not included that out right there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we will move on to, thank you Catherine for all that, for up there and all that. Questions, everybody did a great job. All right, move on to 7A, consider approval of engineering contract amendment number two for the water treatment plant expansion project. Mr. Turner.
Mayor, members of council, this contract is with a consulting engineer who designed the water plant improvement. The construction has been delayed in part where we added the chemical building renovation. There, we had to take the roof off and such for weather delays. And some other delays that the contractor is incurring, which it was gonna add about nine months to the project. This contract amendment just adds for contract administration, construction administration, and for on-site resident project representation. So this total add is for $218,200 for engineering contract. And I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a city sewer extension cost-share agreement with Coopville. Aye, Coopville 1.
Aye.
Coopville 1, sorry, I can remember that. LLC to extend sanitary sewer on Mallet Creek Road. Mr. Turner.
Developers proposed subdivision of Mallet Creek Road. It's sort of that north, northern property there that's in red, shaded red. And to get sewer to that, needs to connect to sewer in Park West subdivision. We have negotiated a cost-share agreement with them to extend this sewer up. The estimated cost of this is, let's see, I can get glasses on here. The estimated cost to extend this up there is about $653,000. The portion of that is to tie on the, or put services for the 42 parcels that we're passing on the way to the subdivision. So that's roughly 150,000. We split the remainder of the cost 50/50, which would be about $253,000 each on that. Those are estimated numbers we would do with the contract. The developer is supposed to get construction pricing, which we would have the math spelled out how we would do this. We're, and we're capping ourselves at 400,000. If the bids come in higher, it's up to the developer to make up the difference of that. There's estimated 49 lots in the subdivision. And one thing I want to point out about doing the cost share, the tap fees in the lot are 2,200 per lot instead of $1,000. You just do the same things. We're gaining extra on the, on the per lot there as well. But I'd recommend your approval on this agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Will all of Park West get service?
No. You can see the, the purple line sort of on the bottom of the U there on the left. So that's, that already has sewer as part of that last cost share we did. So the, where the wording Park West subdivision, that road through there, and I can't remember the name of that road, is it would not have sewer as well as a couple cul-de-sacs off of it. And then on the eastern edge, a little back of the sea there would not have sewer. But the remainder of the subdivision would have.
Are we, are we, is there any annexation obligations here to get the rest of them sewer?
No.
Okay.
But no, that is a portion that there has been an ask for it. So they're just gonna help, can benefit that out.
I'm just wondering, while the, while the eggs are broken and we're making the omelet, is it better to try and reach and get them too?
Probably not within this same project just because of the way we're doing a cost-share agreement. And, and that was one reason that we sort of held off to trying to look at that even when the other one come because we felt like we may have another cost-share agreement coming, which we're glad to see.
Catch that.
No, not another, I think this was looking for something like this one to get part of the subdivision. So that doesn't leave that much for us to, you know, do in another project later.
Once this is done, yeah, that does open the door though to finish out the project that we could.
Do we want to explore, have them give a bid alternate to catch that too while they're there? And, I mean, we can decide if we want to execute that or not.
I think, I think that would be a hardship based on the timeline that there developers trying to meet.
What if we rebid it as a second separate project and a separate bid right now? Hopefully we get a good bid. I think if the timeline works out, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
That way it's a separate.
Am I looking at this wrong? It feels like we're just.
We're here to commission, yeah.
Well, we're, we're looking at, the way I'm sort of looking at it more is that the developer needs sewer, he's getting sewer, and we're getting the benefit of getting services to these other, other properties. You know, we haven't budgeted to do this subdivision this year. So, you know, during the budget process, we'll be happy to look at it and do that.
How, how, is it how, how, how much time or receptacle they got? Are we any failures out there or anything?
Not, not that I've heard of, but that's, well, the only one I heard is we got in that, in that first phase, but there may be some others there.
Okay. Yeah.
It's about 25 years old with the subdivision. It's hardly a little old. Thirty years.
I think, I'm ready, ready to do more of what we're already doing. We're digging up dirt. Go ahead and see.
At least look at it.
Look at it, yeah.
But I mean.
Look right.
We're talking about the different streets, just like we did the first phase on a different street. You know, it didn't impact these people. We did that.
And it's not, and not to press the guard, I understand the timeline of the developer, but the bid alternate could be, they could come back and get it, you know, after they've gotten what they need. It's a loss.
Yeah, I'd rather do it as a separate project, but I'll do whatever the council desires.
What do you, when, when does this project start? When do you start putting on the back of the?
It's part of this agreement he's required to get the engineering done. He's planning on houses, having houses there in October. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think we, about 25.
Yes.
That's impressive.
Well, that's his plan. I'll look see.
Great. Let's see, taking photos today.
So are y'all, are y'all good with the subject as the way it is? But then also having, okay, all right. So we've got a motion and a second for the way it is. And then we'll revisit with the new budget session as well.
Thanks for working this out. I'm not picking holes in it. I know a lot of work goes into negotiating this, just been asking. Thanks. You guys.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, go ahead and vote on this.
All votes correct. Five yes, one motion, cheers.
Thank you, seven D, consider awarding bid for 2025 South Creek area low pressure sewer project. Mr. Turner.
This South Creek area is an area that was promised sewer when it was annexed a little, a little under twenty years ago, back in two thousand and seven. We have taken bids to serve the areas that's shown in red. And Mabel Construction was the low bidder to cost the $1,229,520. We received three bids and I recommend your approval, Mabel Construction.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge, any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Go ahead and take a vote on this.
All votes correct. Five yes, one motion, cheers.
Thank you. Seven E, want a public hearing on the annual progress report of the plans of, I'm not even practicing on this. The plans of service for the body annexation areas, Old Bridge Road, Falling Water River Road, Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road area, East Highway seventy-norch Interstate forty area, West Cookville Interstate forty area, Shadrack Road area, Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area, Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road area, Free Hill Road, North Park, Long Avenue area, South Willow Avenue area, Bidet Road Extension area, Old Stewart Road area, Mackey Road area, Putnam County Fairgrounds area, and Nelson North Tribe Annexation area. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor, we can't miss this. Since ninety-eight, since nineteen ninety-eight, municipalities have been required to prepare and publish an annual report and hold a public hearing on the progress of implementing plans of services for annexation areas until the plans of services are fully implemented. City of Cookville has annexed twenty-five areas that require annual reports. Plans of services have been fully implemented for thirteen of these areas. The most recent are included in the report I'm giving to you tonight. The locations of the twelve areas where services specified in the plans of services remain to be completed are depicted on the displayed map. A comprehensive annual report for these annexation areas was recently published in Herald City. I'm going to start with Old Bridge Road and Falling Water Road, Falling Water River area. Sanitary sewer service is the only service remaining to be provided in this annexation area. The plan of service, services specified that sewer would be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine the expansion of sanitary sewer service in the unserved portions of the present corporate limits. Construction of sanitary sewer improvements for a portion of this area was completed in 2015. That provided sewer to a hundred and eleven parcels. In 2018, sewer service was extended to an additional nine parcels on Boyd Ferris Road. Approximately sixty-three parcels remained without sewer service in that annexation area. All services have been provided to the Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road area with the exception of sewer. The plan of service has specified that sewer would be provided based upon the same policies used to determine the expansion of sewer service in unserved portions of the corporate limits. In 2023, sewer was extended to twenty-six parcels in the area along Buck Mountain Road and South Dry Valley Road. In the East Highway seventy Interstate forty area, all services have been provided except for sewer. The plan specified that sewer would be provided based upon the same policies used to determine sewer expansion in unserved portions of the city. Two phases of public sewer installation have been completed, serving approximately a hundred and sixty-five parcels. In 2022, a sewer project provided sanitary sewer to seven parcels along Highway seventy. Construction began in December 2024 for a project to provide sewer service to twenty-five parcels along South Dry Valley Road and Highway seventy east. All services have been provided in West Cookville I forty area except for sewer. The plan specified that sewer would be provided based upon the same policies used to determine the expansion of sewer in unserved areas of the city. The design for the placement of a water line along Mine Lake Creek Road and on several streets off Mine Lake Creek Road to improve fire protection in the area has been completed. Water quality control, late bidding that job to evaluate the need, the need for, and location for easements. If Mine Lake Creek Road was realigned or improved. Water quality control does report that parts, if not all of this project, is expected to bid in 2025. Sanitary sewer extension project was completed from I forty through parts of Park West into parcels near I forty interchange, providing forty parcels with access to sewer. The Cookville Energy Department has determined that the area is fully served by electric service and street lighting. And this is also the area that would see additional extensions with the contract very presented to council tonight. All services have been provided to the Shadrack, Shadrack Road area, except sewer. The plan specified that sewer would be provided based upon the same criteria, standards, and policies used to determine expansion of sewer in unserved portions of the city. A project was completed in 2024 that provided sanitary sewer to twenty-two parcels along Shadrack Road. That leaves five parcels in the area without sanitary sewer service. In the Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area, all services were provided except sewer. The plan again, the plan here specified that sewer service would be provided within twenty years of the effective date of annexation, which was January twenty-first, twenty twenty, oh, January twenty-first, two thousand and seven. Sewer has been provided to two parcels in Rebecca Place in 2010 and 2024. A house in Rebecca Place, phase three, experienced septic issues and sewer was extended to serve that home. Bids were opened on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five for a construction project to extend sewer to an additional three parcels in this area. An engineering contract was approved in May 2024, which included the design for the remaining unsuared parcels in that area. The Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road area, and also services have been provided except sewer. The plans, again here, specified that sewer would be provided within twenty years after the effective date of annexation, which was September second, two thousand and seven. In 2023, sewer construction project provided sewer access to twenty parcels in the area, as well as a new residential subdivision that's currently under development. Again, bids were, bids were opened on January twenty-eighth for a project to extend sewer to the remaining unserved, unsuared parcels in this area that council approved in an earlier action. The Free Hill, the Free Hill Road area, all services have been provided except sewer. The plan specified that sewer would be provided within twenty-five years of the effective date of annexation, which was October seventeenth, two thousand and nine. All services have been provided in the South Willow Avenue area, as specified in the plan, with the exception of sanitary sewer. The plan of services specified that sewer would be provided based upon the same policies used to determine the expansion of sewer in the unserved portion of the current city limits. In the Bidet Road Extension area, again, all services are provided except sewer. The plan specified sewer would be provided under the same policies used to determine sewer in unserved portions of the city. Sanitary sewer line under I forty, which was required to provide service north of the interstate, was completed in 2016. In 2018, a low pressure sewer system was installed, which provided sewer service to seventy-nine tracks along Highway seventy and adjacent streets. In 2022, sewer extension provided service to two parcels along Highway seventy and Locust Grove Road. In 2023, a sanitary sewer extension provided sewer service to two parcels, one which will be the future home of the Putnam County Fairgrounds. For the Old Stewart Road area, all services have been provided except sewer. The plan specified that sewer would be provided under the same policies used to determine the expansion of sewer in unserved portions of the city. As part of the I forty interchange project, a sewer line was installed along Tennessee Avenue, serving five parcels, and eliminated a pump station that served Academy Sports. A sewer extension was completed in 2022, which leaves only three parcels. And one of, one of those is, is a parcel owned by the city of Cookville. Another is an out parcel that's owned by Academy Sports that are currently not served by sewer. For the Mackey Farm area, all services have been provided except sewer. The plan specified sewer would be provided when economically feasible and based on the same policies used to determine the expansion of sewer in unserved portions of the present corporate limits. Construction began in December 2024 for a project that will provide sanitary sewer access to six parcels in the area. The Cookville Energy Department is continuing to work with the UC EMC for the completion of installation of street lighting. All services have been provided to the Putnam County Fairgrounds area, as stipulated in the plan of services. Sanitary sewer was provided to the annexation area upon the effective date of annexation. No future reports will be given on that annexation area. And the last area, the Nelson North Tribe Annexation area, water is being provided by Double Springs Utility. Sanitary sewer was provided to the property when the annexation, was provided to the property upon the effective date of annexation. The city does have limited sewer capacity in the Kane Creek Sewer Drainage Basin, and no additional units are permitted until sewer capacity is added to the Kane Creek Pump Station for that annexation area. All city services have, have been provided in the annexation area, as stipulated in the plan of services, and no future reports should be given for that. Well, that includes the report for all the annexation areas. And Barry Turner is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion on seven E?
Some.
And a motion from Vice Mayor Eldridge, just a second.
Second.
Second from Councilman Baji. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing portion for this. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item? So yeah, we'll close the public hearing portion, any discussion from council?
That's a good sign that we're moving along.
I bet you got shorter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially on the sewer, the services should be removed.
We, we might possibly add more though this year.
Oh, yeah, all right, never mind then. Any more discussion? All right, Brad, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, one motion, cheers.
Thank you very much, that concludes the agenda portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the council on any non-agenda items? Oh, hi, both of you, yes. Come to the podium, if you don't mind saying, hey, where you live. Three minutes, and to your.
Good evening, my name is Becca Duncan, I'm the director of Pelican Hands of Putnam County, and also one of the people that is in charge of Cookville Community Cares, which right now we're doing the emergency homeless shelter that most people are familiar with. First off, I'd like to say thank you to Lauren. When we first opened up, we weren't sure where we were going to open. It was a last minute decision where we couldn't be at the rescue mission. And the county came through and got us the community center, which was not ideal, but it worked for what we needed at the time. Lauren was one of the first people that came by to check and see what it was that we needed, how we were doing, those kinds of things. I also have something to read, but Luke, I also want to say, because I know it's not in our notes, Luke spent about two hours there the other night, helping people, try to get jobs, that kind of thing. That is our ultimate goal. And so I'll start by saying that, and then if anything, if anyone has any questions. So over the past few months, our collective efforts have directly impacted the lives of our unhoused neighbors, providing critical support and resources that improve both individual outcomes and community wellbeing. With the funding entrusted to us last year, we have served over a hundred individuals this season. We were open ten days at Thanksgiving, we were open thirty days in January, and we will be open eight days this round. So we're hoping to close on Monday, which would give us another eight day stint. So we have assisted with obtaining essential legal documents. We have helped them with health insurance. We helped them with food stamp forms, prescriptions, job employment. We've established the stable locations where individuals can receive mail. You put one barrier in front of someone like this and it becomes this huge thing. People like you and I don't understand that, but something as simple as receiving their mail can make the difference of them getting social security, food stamps, all of those kinds of things. We will be open on Fridays, even after we close, at the United Church of Cookville. They have offered to, they've been an integral part of making this work this year. And they, we will be open from nine to one every Friday, regardless of the weather, so that they can still, they can come and get their mail, they can get showers, do laundry, those kinds of things. So we're, we're trying to put those things into place as well. We've provided peer support, we've tried to provide all the services that build dignity and stability. Beyond the direct services, our work, we believe, and we're asking Brandon over at Emergency Management to try to help us figure out the numbers, but we do believe that when we pull the numbers, we will have saved the city and the hospital money by providing those services, keeping them housed, and those kinds of things. We've also been able to utilize the community response team, that is a grant funded response team, that is available, and I say this to anyone in the community, because it has been perfect for us, but from three to eleven, Monday through Friday, we can call them and they will dispatch a mental health counselor and a paramedic. So it leaves our nine-one-one free from just doing regular nine-one-one things. It also keeps the police away when we don't need them, and we can kind of de-escalate things without that. We have tried to secure, like I said, future housing for them. We've helped them with their applications. We, in January, we got a blind gentleman. He came here, he was on a bus, he got sick, was dropped off here. We were able to get him on his way back to Florida. But most importantly, we fostered connections, something vital to recovery and transformation. This work is not done alone, but through a united community effort, demonstrating that we will invest in people. When we invest in people, we create lasting change. Our next steps, our goal is to have a need for a permanent low barrier shelter. We do work with the mission, we can't be in the same facility, we don't have the same mission. But we, we're able to pick up the phone and say, how many beds do you have available? And that kind of thing. But we do different work than they do. And so our goal is to have a permanent low barrier shelter. While we've made significant progress, our city still lacks a permanent low barrier shelter, a critical resource that would allow us to further improve outcomes for our unhoused neighbors. A stable, accessible shelter would provide safety, reduce the strain on emergency services, and serve as a foundation for connecting individuals to long-term solutions, including housing, employment, and healthcare. We need the support of our city leadership, local organizations, and community members to make this happen. Together, we can build a sustainable solution that ensures no one in our city is left without a safe place to turn. We appreciate your continued support as we work to make this vision a reality. We could not have done this without the community. If we put out a post that says, you know, we need food on this day, food just appears. We have people that come and pick up laundry to take laundry and all of those things. Last year, we asked for the $5,000, we'll be applying for more again. But some of the things that are not covered are things like United Church of Cookville's utility bill for thirty days of housing over fifty people each night, and their water bill and those kinds of things. So more than anything, it's, it's not about the money. That's not why we're here, we're just here to say thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what she said. So this is, it started out as a kind of really emergency thing three years ago. And it's, it has become a community. It's, it's a mutual aid effort that we're doing, right? The county helps, the city helps, the churches help, the, just the individual citizens help. And we are making a difference, and our, our desire is to get people off these streets, when it comes down to it, and get them back to independence. It's amazing the barriers, like she was talking about. I mean, I've, I've helped a girl run around today, go to one place, find out she needed this one thing. And I'm like, well, you don't have a car, she didn't have a cellphone. I'm like, you would never get this done without help, you know, or it'd be very difficult. And so, one thing I want to bring up is, there's a perception as to what unhoused and homeless people are, right? What we've learned is that that is a false perception. You come into our facility, so many of these people, they're not on drugs at all, you know? A lot of them don't have mental health issues, a lot of them do, right? But a lot of them, it's just like, you know, maybe they came up out of a foster care system, had no place to go. Maybe they were elderly, and wherever they're renting, it's got sold out from under there. Maybe they're fleeing domestic abuse at that point in time. And whatever it was, it broke it, and it broke them all the way down, and it put them on the streets. And so these are the people that we're dealing with, and so thanks to, to the community support, we are dealing with them. So, thank you.
Everybody has to thank y'all. And I'll say, yeah, thank you for what you're doing, because it was a need and there was no one doing it. And y'all stepped up and did it every which way you could. So thank y'all for what you're doing, and glad to hear you're applying to get some more money from the city. So, thank you very much.
You know, I applaud, we talk a lot about this, and so I applaud you guys for everything that you do, no doubt. Larry, you and I've talked how multifaceted this issue is in individuals. But they are, they're doing a really good job. They know the ones that are seeking the help they want, and they also know the ones like we know that are just doing the thing. And so I commend you and I appreciate everything that you guys do, so. And just on note, typically, a national stat says that about $14,000 is what a homeless person does cost the, the local city when it comes to everything. So appreciate you guys helping us out in that, for sure.
Anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Anyone else who'd like to speak to the council? Okay, and then we've got some other items that we need from Mr. Mills, 9A, announcing the cancellation of the March 2025 meeting. I guess I just announced it. There you go. Yes, sorry, I just stumbled your podium there. So we're canceling the March 20th meeting. And I'll let you report the rest, Mr. Mills.
Okay, well, over the past several months, I know councilor spoke to you about this. We have had some issues with unauthorized excavations within our streets and rideways. This has resulted in unannounced street closures. And also, I guess more importantly, is we believe created unnecessary damage to our streets. Our policy, the city's policy is to require wherever possible, boring into the street instead of open cutting. And I'm sure we've got several citizens that would testify that the streets are never the same once it's been cut. In Title 16, Chapter 5, 16502, which is on the screen, provides an auto multiple for any person, firm, corporation, association, or others, including utility districts, to make excavations in or under any street and so forth without first obtaining an excavation permit. There are two primary reasons we want to require a permit. First is simply to make us aware that an act of these happened. That way we can go through the notice about street closure and so forth. Second, the permit process will allow us to determine if there's an alternative to excavating the street or the right of way. Can we bore it instead of cutting the street? That's our goal here. Or can we reroute so you don't cut the street? So staff in particular, Mad Beth and John, have developed a new permit form, which is on the screen here. Also, all companies that we are aware of have previously done work within our streets are being notified by the Upwards Department about the new permit form and the requirements for obtaining a permit. Now, that same section of the municipal code also has specifications for repairs of the street. We want to make sure that people who are doing this type of work are aware of all their obligations to the city. The new permit form will be required effective tomorrow. And if you've got any questions, I'll find answering.
And very much, any comments from the council?
This is including the right of way areas.
Yes, it does.
Anybody else? All right, go ahead. Meaning of the term.